We have a forum, so call to order and.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What is your pledges with D. Warren?
I think we approve it.
A second hand? Is this, are you Charlie, is this May 6th the actual date we're supposed to come back?
Yes, the first Thursday in May.
So the next?
We actually get a two week for free.
So the next board of selectmen meeting will be Thursday, May 6th at 5:30 here at the fire station. Any selectmen comments, announcements? Yeah?
Nope. Sorry, I said my head now, I should have responded earlier. I apologize.
First thing on the agenda is permit fees. And Christine nicely closed them in the packet. This is simply to give us something to start discussions with because these papers easier to talk about than nothing. So these are the, the way that I've, the way that I guesstimated these things was I had the current building permit fees, all of that information taken off the website. So the current fees and then just some proposed changes that would more adequately reflect the reality that we now have a full-time code enforcement officer and also the philosophical understanding behind it that the people who are not changing their homes should not necessarily be subsidizing those who are. So that was, that was my thinking.
We had, when we looked at this before, we had samples from several other towns. Are we gonna use those as a benchmark?
I didn't see any reason why we should, simply because all of the fees are all over the place and different towns charge different fees for different things. So it didn't seem like it was a very useful thing. And I also didn't see for purposes of discussion why other towns should have any influence on what the needs of the town of Westback were.
Well, it helps give us boundaries on what, whether we're high, low, or on the money. I think I'd like to compare other causes taking one example from one person.
I was just proposing these as a point of discussion. I wasn't expecting that we would vote on these tonight.
Because we had, we had like three or four other towns included in the last stack that helped give us some guidelines to consider. And I think that would be useful certainly to evaluate.
My, my remit, as they say, was to come up with some proposals. This is my, this is a proposal. This, that's, I'm not, I'm not.
Wedded?
Wedded to any one or anything in this piece of paper. Just considering the needs of the town of Westback and our current prices. It seemed to me it was a place to start.
One, just one question.
Yeah.
Only one that sticks out to me.
Yeah.
On windmill, why would a residential be more expensive than a commercial? Oh, I probably just missed it.
It would, okay.
Is, is this something that I've commented on too, or is it just?
You're welcome to have a comment.
So some of these are tripled and the one that really stands out is you went from non-conforming expansion or alterations to someone adding 20% to their house, went from $75 to $1,000?
Yeah, why should we encourage people to make non-conforming additions to their houses?
They're not making non-conforming additions. The house is non-conforming to start with and then they're just adding on to it to make it more livable.
To, we don't know that that's why they want to do it.
Well, I can tell you based on being the chair of the planning board that's why people do it. They need to add a bathroom on the first floor because they're first floor living or they don't have enough room for like a laundry or that sort of thing. So that seems really opportunistic to go from $75 to $1,000.
I just throw them up there.
So how, how would people?
How, I have, I want to proceed. Look them over, make, have people make comments, look at things, make what, see what you think is reasonable. There's a start.
Well, we got two weeks.
Look at the two weeks.
You're free. Right, so maybe it'd be a good time to?
Well, I'll bring on, I printed out several of the other town information. And, you know, certainly it'll give us guidelines on where we are. And I agree with you, Darlene, $1,000 is a little off the chart on this. But we need to certainly try and make sure we're within a reasonable amount for our folks coming in to continue to live in Westback.
Can we do some kind of a?
I'm a visual.
I have, I have all printed out, we have.
But I said we printed out, we have like maybe building permit and put maybe full renovation requests or something.
Sure. Okay. I, I, I mean, I know Madeline wanted to run this, I'm happy to take that on. I tried to do that last time. You want me to take that over?
No, I'm just, I'm just thinking if you're gonna do some comparison.
It would make sense to have them lined up.
I'm happy to do that. I tried that last time and was told I was stepping a little backwards. I'm happy to do it now.
Current planning board application fees. Is that something that? You fucking put?
I, I'm sorry, I spent your phone. I can't hear you.
The planning board application fees.
Yes.
Is that something that you maybe want to make a proposal? For the planning board or?
We can. This is Christine said that it was to be done by the town staff, so we did it.
No, I'm just thinking recommendations, more ideas, ultimately the selectmen will determine, right?
Sure. Certainly we can do that.
Because wow, these are all, Madeline, thank you for doing this because I think it just makes it much more clear that there is no conformity, there is no.
No, there isn't, there isn't. But they're, they're all over the place in, when you look at other towns. And when you look at other towns, what they charge for is different. So it was difficult. So start by pulling some figures out of the hat and then look at what's, what's reasonable. One of the things that I was thinking about was how much time does this take? And there's no way to tell if you're starting out the process whether this is going to be a job that's gonna take 15 minutes or 15 years to figure it out. So, um, so there's, there's not really a beginning place. And the ultimate question is what does the town of Westback need? The septic permit is something that is, John says it was state.
Yep, okay, awesome. So that's probably something that we.
We, we don't need to check that.
Right.
I would, I would suspect that a permit fee should be commensurate in a lot of time that takes the town staff to file the application in the appropriate folder for the property. I mean, it all has to be documented. What's done, otherwise it keep expanding 30% and the time to change hands. So I would think that that time span is more where we need to look at for feet ups. Although I mean, it's expensive to have somebody, you know, sit there and do the filing. You know, it's not a five-minute drop and end.
Right, and we've just, we've just agreed to pay the code enforcement officer a professional salary. So this is not something that's being done for free.
I do like the, you know, just looking at this quickly is the junkyard, auto graveyard, I mean $100 for a permit for that seems really ridiculous. So I see where you went up.
That's commercial.
Yeah.
Is the hybrid?
Well, you can't have a junkyard only. You can't have a business then?
There are people that.
No, you're not supposed to have more than three cars.
It requires a hearing and it's an extensive application process.
You can't open a junkyard. You can't open a junkyard unless it's in commercial. But someone living a residential might have a junkyard based on the definition and then that needs to be dealt with. It's two different things.
But technically you can't have it. It would have to be dealt with.
You cannot open a junkyard unless you can't rule that we have one.
Right.
All right, let's table this and do some more research and bring it back up for the next May 6th.
Don't move.
Second it.
So what's the deadline for when you want the planning board to respond?
Could you bring it right for the May 6th meeting?
Maybe they will for that. They don't, they don't, I don't know.
I think, I don't think this is gonna be decided at the next May 6th meeting. I think it's gonna take some time. So even if we style any other things. I, I think this is a long-going project for a couple of months.
Oh.
I think we'd like to July 1st, but I don't know if we.
And there's, there's nothing that says that they all have to be changed all at the same time.
So if we bring it up at the next meeting, which is a Tuesday night, we'll be all set?
Yep.
We know we have to do something. It's just how do we do something that's fair and equitable?
Well, and then, and that looks out for the interest of the town rather than the interest of people who would want to.
Direct something for them.
Right.
People who live here are the town. We also want to encourage new development as well.
Well, some of us may, not, not all of us might. That's not necessarily true.
All right, more to be, to be, um, town administrator. Where am I going?
They're not here.
So there's no town administrator.
Sorry. And I think future agenda items, we talked about that last time. I don't think there's a whole need to go into that. You guys agree at this point?
Well, I think we were gonna set those with Christine and as she has a family emergency, that doesn't seem as though.
We'd be good to do that.
So can we table the future agenda?
Sure. Those will be our second for the meeting. She just jigs stuff. Like two meetings in a row in her 20 minutes.
This is part of your selectmen's hat, is put on your assessing hat.
Application for abatement of property tax, tax map U6 lot 15. I'm not sure who wants to start. Ron or Darlene? Usually Ron starts.
I didn't realize I was doing anything but hearing what the firm.
Ron, it's up to you.
Okay, uh, basically I read through everything that she filed for this. And the thing is I went over all the figures and I also went through and saw what she still owed on taxes. I didn't know why she'd come up with the 5,700. She had an abatement for the overvaluation of acreage, so she already had that. There was a mistake obviously made on the land. She, most of the land is in mixed, mixed wood, which is the highest in the value. So calculated out again, I guess I still put up with the same thing that we get for the town. I don't know, I know that, you know, it was one value and then it changed and obviously it had to do with the type of wood that there is in the acreage. I've worked with her before on, on the father's house and this is what, I mean, you know, we're very close to being, you know, hostile to each other. And I took her word on, on most of the stuff in the house and I had reduced that a while back. She did have a problem with the mobile home. We took that off, that was a long while ago. And it still shows on the CAD, but it doesn't give a sense to me. It's just that I interpreted when, when she went through and said about the acreage not being discounted. Well, of course, there is a discount that goes with a particular type of acreage and a particular type of, type of area you're in that, you know, there's a reduction for the amount of acreage. However, that does not apply to tree growth. She went on to the power lines and I explained in this thing, the power lines have to be done by a sales ratio study or whatever. They're just, you've gotta have comparisons to automatically go in and change the computer. Right now, we're not anywhere in town taking away from the power lines that cross the property or annexed the property.
Do you have property that crosses the property, the power lines everywhere besides ours?
No.
Then that's why it's not been done?
Vision did this. I wouldn't have done it. I certainly would have. In other towns, they have done it. But I checked all your neighbors that, about that power line and there's no money taken off the power lines.
Well, when we talked, you said that we had a credit, or we should have a credit because the power line bisects the property. But then you said it was taken off because of the tree growth. The power lines does not bisect the piece of property that is out of tree growth. I'm sorry, it bisects the property that is not in the tree growth.
Yeah.
So based on what you said, that we should have had a discount because the land was bisected by CMP, should have been valid.
Well, I do agree with that. They, they should. All of, all of the neighborhood, all, all in your neighborhood should have an influence that shows that the power lines is an influence of the value of the property. But none of them do and that is something that Vision put in.
How do we rectify that? And it's supposed to be there and it's not?
Well, here we go in and you try to chase some sales down in the area or into a town like this that has that same problem and see what they did with it. Maybe for some reason Vision left it out. I don't know why. But obviously the, you know, it's a hard thing to prove unless you've got the sales. And right now the sales are so high, it don't really matter where you are in town.
So if you, can you explain why the property acre discount went from .8 to .9 when you changed to the tree growth?
Point eight to point nine?
Yes.
Oh, in, in one of them says the other. Is that right?
It was .8 before you changed it to the tree, to add the tree growth in. And then it went up to .92 from .8, which increased the value.
Point nine of an acre in tree growth, wasn't it?
No, no, it wasn't .9 acres. I'm talking about the factor. The acre discount went from .8 before the tree growth was done.
Oh, okay, .5 is a suppose.
To .92.
You look into the vision and you'll see that all the backland was, that the front path, where your house is in the front path is where Bronz and, and what's her name, Bonn is. You'll see that the backland is, is, is a forty and where you are with the house is a fifty. And when you go into the forty, because the forty is pretty low right now, then that kicked in automatically.
I'm not talking about the forty. How about the acre discount?
What's that?
It went from .8 to .92, which increased the value. When you adjusted the tree growth.
You mean the one that isn't in tree growth?
The whole, yes. Yep. And I don't know why that changed, why that would change.
Point nine two, it sounded like it, it come through the discount of the acreage that is not in this, in tree growth. So when the acres are reduced, then that would, that would come down too. The more acres you have, the bigger the discounts.
So it had nothing to do with the street index? It was forty before and it's still forty?
No, it shouldn't unless it is the forty. The forty has already been reduced to .85 on number one.
Right, but then that's the adjustment, acre discount went from .8 to .92. Is that what the discrepancy is with land value?
Is it the acreage that?
And a whole bunch of things.
The acreage, is it the same acreage?
No.
It isn't the same, no, that's, that's in that, like that. It's based on the acres, the number of acres. The less acreage you have, the higher it is.
And what's the breakpoint in that acreage?
The what?
What's that breakpoint where it changes because of the acreage?
It's on that thing for you.
At how many acres though? At how many acres does it change?
Oh, gee, I think it changes like at five or four, it starts to change.
Four acres?
Four to five, I think, if I'm not wrong.
So I've got nine acres here, so it shouldn't have changed.
You're nine acres, so .92 is probably right.
No, I got, but you said it changed at four or five.
It starts to change at four, five.
Yes, I'm on this page right here, if you're looking for one of the shots.
See what you got.
The July 2 Vision card on that sheet of four, one where I just gotta line them up.
Acre discount, yeah. Point eight. Eight, nine acres, point eight. That's a forty, I see you thought it, right?
Ron, what, what is your recommendation?
I think the recommendation would be to, to not allow the abatement. I mean, if you run the figures, that, that is the price on the land. And everything has been recalculated and recalculated. She said 5,7 acres, 5,700 dollars difference. And then she come up with $63.
Of what you paid, that's a delta of what was paid versus what we billed.
Yeah, the, the bill on that would have been 59.
So I guess, is the 5,700 dollar abatement equal to the $63 in taxes owed? Is that what the discrepancy is during?
No, 59 is zero. 63 is with interest.
Yeah, the interest is.
So the mixed wood was all wrong. There's a whole lot more than just that little thing wrong here. I've got a list of six issues.
Six what?
Issues.
Six. Six issues. Yeah, you did, and I had a hard job getting through.
Was that?
Kind of a hard job getting through.
I'm going, I'm going to move the, the abatement request fee to nine for map U6 lot 015, account 381.
Okay, so can I have a chance or no? I gather it's complicated.
Can we let the, can we let someone second it and then have discussion?
Okay.
Okay, because that's just how it's usually done.
I'm just struggling with.
Is there something in the written part that I gave you that doesn't make sense?
Well, let's wait, let's wait for the motion.
Sorry.
Do you wanna?
Before, before it's bested up to be seconded or?
I'm not gonna second it. So I guess it's not been seconded?
I'm just, I, I don't understand what's going on here. It's hard to second something when you don't understand what's going on here. And part of what I'm struggling is Ron, is when you bring these things before us. It's not clear. I, I struggle with your explanation. So I'm trying, I'm really trying to find the fault and understand what's going on, but to be honest with you, I don't.
Well, okay, we'll go back to the first of it. She was charged for five acres that she didn't have.
Okay, so she was always charged for five acres.
Yeah, and that was.
Can we pause, can we, are you, do you agree with that piece of it?
Yes, but what I've done here is I adjusted for that and pointed out a couple of what I thought were errors and that's how I did my math. So I don't know if it matters that before I had five acres that just got taken off.
But it was all, so this started with, so this started with re-charged or, I just want to clarify, she was charged for five acres that she didn't have.
But that, that's in the past because.
And it was probably kind of weird things.
That was a big, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think she keeps mentioning something about the 2008 versus the 2011 I got. Is that correct?
The 2008 versus the 2011 what?
This is what it is.
From the Vision cards wrong?
What are you talking about? Is that numbers?
Vision card is assessed 2011, 200.
That's your account.
I don't see a 2008 wrong, so.
Well, she mentioned the 2008 and I think it was on one of the first ones that she got.
So you have, you have a, darling, you have a revised assessed value of 2008, 200. Where did that, oh, here it is.
2008, oh, $100, okay.
You see the top that column?
It's in the table.
No, up top, one up, the next table up. That's your 2008 total, right there.
And who came up with that? Ron?
The 2008?
That's what it was sent from. 2008 because the wrong valuation had been indexed on the type of properties she had.
So this 2008 number then is correct for the valuation?
No, it's not correct. It's not correct. Even if, uh, she had got the bill for 2008, uh, 200, 2008. She would have, after she looked into and asked for the abatement and she just paid for the 2008, she would have, she would have got a supplemental bill for the difference between 2008 and 2011. Because of the fact that the biggest time of that tree growth is the most expensive.
And do we have the correct amount in there for her type of tree growth?
Yeah, yeah.
Which one is the?
And where?
On, on the, on the present, uh, hat.
Is that the 213 or not? I don't think I have that. If it's print. I have one that's.
I have one dated as 9/17/20, so that's the one that's the accurate card.
9/6.
The 11/3/2020 one that's down his heart, but it said mixed wood, that one's wrong.
2011, 800 is what's gonna be this year too. Because her father had a veterans and a home sit. So the bigger figure that was.
But that, that, that stays until the following year he passes because he passed after April.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was.
So that wouldn't change that year, would change the next year?
No, she, she got very close to that.
So you're saying the 2118?
2118 is what it is, yeah.
For this year? For 20.
Yeah, that's what it would have been anyway because she would have to get a supplemental bill for the difference between 2008 and 2011. Because the value of the tree growth amount she had, the different type of wood she had would have come to 2011, not 2008. amount she had, the different type of wood she had, would have come to two thousand eleven, not two thousand eight.
So I may be wrong, I'm gonna throw this out here, so are we disputing over a little over eight thousand dollars worth of value?
I think it's fifty-seven hundred dollars worth of value.
Fifty-seven, I don't know, I'll have to ask her where she come up with fifty-seven hundred.
It's, um, both of you have on your documents is fifty-seven hundred.
Yeah, fifty-seven, that's the abatement she asked for.
That's the value, that's what we're disputing, that's what she asked, it's fifty-seven hundred, I think.
And the difference between two eleven eight and two oh, two?
Two thirteen nine and two oh eight, if you're looking at the.
Okay.
So Ronnie, you're saying that there is no credit for the CMP, because the original tax bill was two thirteen nine? You're saying that there's no credit for the CMP?
So the first page here shows the two thirteen nine to what she was billed on the tax bill. So, then here, two thousand thirteen nine minus two oh eight is the fifty-seven. So that's what she's asking for, yes.
Can, can we just go through the list and decide what was valid and what was not valid that I can propose? And then we can come up with what the land is supposed to be worth? And then worry about how much I owe or don't owe after that?
What I'm struggling with, darling, is the two oh eight doesn't match any of his figures.
Correct.
And I think that's why I'm, why I'm struggling, because.
So, I guess where, do you want the sheet, the sheet that you submitted, darling?
That's it.
Okay, so, can you walk us through how you got the two oh eight valuation?
Yeah, so, if you look at the first page, I've already sent you the issues. Property acreage was five acres over, that I think has been taken care of. Do you guys, is there a current tax card for what it's supposed to be now? Or what's supposed to be?
What's gonna be this year?
No, what was supposed to have been last year.
Same thing.
Okay, then we're gonna dispute that, so, the, you're saying that number three, that there isn't a value adjustment because the land was bisected by the CMP, even though you told me it should be? You're saying that it won't be that way because no one else in town is doing it?
Right.
Even though nobody else in town actually has land biseected by the power line?
I'm saying in your neighborhood, we've got seventeen neighborhoods in town. In your neighborhood, every, I checked every one of them, and, and nobody is getting a discount for the, for the acreage.
Not even Don Allen?
Frank, no. It, it is ingested, not give anybody.
Okay, so, then there's no value adjustment being adjacent to it either. So three and four are no, correct?
Three and four.
Number three and four, any of the issues?
I address three as nine acres, not in tree growth. Same, it was taxed the same as it always was.
What?
Was .85 due to low, my authority index act. Acre discount on tree growth is not used, because it is a state program. Every tree growth pass was twice the same within the county of Saginaw. Wherever it is.
Where you are.
Are you on five?
I'm on what I wrote.
Okay, of what he wrote? Or what's that different?
What I wrote is, is, is in reaction to what she told me.
So three and four, though, how to do with CMP, so we're gonna disagree that those are no?
The what?
Items three and four.
Items three and four.
Yeah.
On mine. We're gonna agree that that's a no, but there is no discount for CMP.
Right.
Right.
Okay, number five was the tree growth, so the vision card had listed the pricing at four fifty an acre for mixed wood when it should have been three seventy-two.
No.
That's definitely.
That's not right either.
It's not true?
No.
Really?
And that three seventy-two is for what type of wood?
So, mixed wood.
Three seventy-two is for, uh, hardwood.
No.
There it is. I've got one here, come here. I have one, they always come to give you. Maybe the lady might have one.
According to the.
The one that says Julie on the top is Ron's rebuttal.
So, every year, you guys have to fill out a municipal valuation return to the state. So I, I looked at that to find out how much per acre mixed wood, softwood, and hardwoods was supposed to be.
I think it's, you have zero acres here.
It's three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Three seventy-two?
For twenty twenty, according to the report.
I think you're, you're, there's a downside, that's the difference, I think so.
Yes.
Well, that's gotta be the same as mine.
I think they've also.
So it's three seventy-two, not four fifty?
Four fifty-eight is, is, uh, uh, mixed.
Mixed, now, four fifty is hardwood.
Four fifty-eight is, I don't know. Maybe there's, you've got one of those with a state.
You have three seventy-two for hardwood?
Yes, I do.
And four fifty-eight, is this what you need?
No, I need the, the actual state one, I was gonna give her one.
This, this is, this one?
No. Why, heck it, man.
Are you looking at the municipal registration? What number are you on?
Twenty-two.
All right, Ron.
That was the second page.
Ron, if you're here.
Here you go.
But Ron.
Tree growth, four fifty-eight, yes.
Darlene's talking about the municipal return, and these numbers down here.
Yeah. Oh, talk about that, yeah.
A legal thing, you have to send to the state, right?
So that's what I went by.
Yeah.
Is that correct, or no?
Mixed wood, no, they were reversed.
I would think hardwood would be more valuable than mixed wood.
No.
It is, oh, I guess it's, he says that they will reverse the state one differently.
They'll be reversed, uh, it's probably what was sent to the state, unfortunately. Anybody in tree growth got, got the correct values. Except for Darlene.
So, so what are the figures, what did the state figure for mixed wood?
Mixed wood, four fifty-eight.
Why is mixed wood worth more than hardwood?
I don't know, never used to be. It used to be softwood was, was, because that's one of them.
Right.
But that's four twenty-nine, mixed wood.
I don't think, I think we need to look at that.
We don't set that.
Well, no, no, we don't, that's a tree growth program.
No, but we, this is what we put into our SIOF, we need to make sure that these are accurate. I'm gonna look that up.
So you can see the confusion here?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, we can only go off what you guys report.
I have this, I don't know what I was like.
I'm as confused as you guys are, so I'll just admit that right up front. I think we are, we don't know what to.
And that don't even make sense.
That's the only one that is not known.
Okay.
Okay, so that one's a no also then?
Well, she's gonna double check.
This is what I was going.
What was seven, you mean? I think, I think the values probably represented it when we, when we did the municipal valuation.
Well, that would explain a lot if that's the.
You're just seeing on, on that how many acres were there on the valuation that you had to correct. Amount for acres.
We need, um.
For revaluation?
We need that.
Okay, here we go, Saginaw County. It is, softwood is four twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Mixed wood is four fifty-eight.
Yeah.
Let me make sure we're using correctly. Hold on, four twenty-nine, four fifty-eight is mixed, and hardwood is three seventy-two. So they definitely. And these are transposed here.
Yeah.
You never look that up?
That's what we filed.
That's what we filed as a town of the state. Well, we, we have since corrected that, I'm the same. But that's what she's basing her numbers on.
For twenty twenty. So what, what the town filed to the state for twenty twenty was incorrect, and that's what we're asking for the abatement because of the numbers that we took.
I think that's a fair ask. I move that we accept their abatement request. And waive the late penalty fee as well. Based upon the figures that we've seen and that, um, their homework proved based upon their math and what they used.
That doesn't, that doesn't change, that doesn't change the value.
No, because they would, they would have got a supplemental in there.
Does anyone care to second that for discussion?
So explain that to me.
What's that?
Why would they get a supplemental?
Because they were sent a, a tax bill that showed the, the mixed wood at three seventy-two. When it should have been four fifty-eight. That's a state program.
We filed it at that rate, but then we corrected it.
That's the state rate, and they transpose the numbers, so we taxed incorrectly. So when that was caught, he was saying that everyone would have received bills with the corrected amount.
Did everyone receive bills with corrected amounts?
When we make errors, or the state makes errors, we're allowed to correct it if it's.
Because the state sets these fees, it's like plumbing. So, but did we, did we rectify that with everyone that was filed in hardwood and softwood?
We wouldn't do that necessarily, right, or, don't you?
But it came, so in theory, everyone that had that rate should all be getting a higher tax bill and not just Darlene. If they had mixed wood.
Oh, no, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I, everyone I checked, no, none of them, it was just us.
No, but we weren't charged with a lower rate, we were charged with a higher rate.
You should have been charged with a higher rate.
But nobody else was charged.
So why are you saying that?
Everybody was, I couldn't find any, any of them that, that was charged, uh, three seventy-two for mixed wood.
So you reviewed, you reviewed the other individuals around her.
We weren't charged with three seventy-two.
You were originally charged with three seventy-two, originally.
Originally when?
When the bill come out.
When the bill came out. So, I don't think so, because I was going by the other number, that it was the higher one. So maybe what we need is you've gotta lay out exactly what we were charged for, because the, the tax card didn't match the commitment book. And the trio matched the commitment book, but the commitment book didn't match the number in the tax card. So I still don't know what you're charging us for. I have no idea what you're charging me for, that's why I tried to just start fresh. Then put all this stuff in here and figure out the number. So, maybe the math needs to be done again before I get a supplemental bill or anything to make sure that this is correct.
I don't have an issue with that, I, I think that's a fair ask.
I think we should verify that everyone that's in the wood is evaluated as well.
Well, I think that's, Bronson has done.
I find it.
So we'll do that.
Because if you look, I put the copy of the commitment in here, and a copy of the, the trio sheet, and then a copy of the tax bill. And the tax bill and the commitment match, but the tax card doesn't. So, something's not.
All right, I'd like to make the motion that Darlene's bill is reviewed for correct numbers, and any late fee that's assessed to her property is dismissed.
And by late fee, you mean interest?
Yes. And verify, and, and I'll add to that, that we need to verify that the numbers on the bill are what they should be.
They need to be double checked, hardwood, softwood, mixed wood, is all?
Yeah, and it would be great if somebody could do like the math to write it out, so I can understand what the heck is going on. Because.
Madeline.
And then the card moving forward just needs to be fixed and straightened up. Beyond that, all it is, is taking dad's name off and his exemptions off, and it should stay the same.
Madeline's second, you're promoting. You wanna go, all in favor? Darlene, I'm hoping with the rebound, all this stuff goes away.
The last time we had a rebalance, it screwed it all up. They had our house and dad's property and dad's place on our property and our court on his place, which was really our place. It was all screwed back then, and they had a sample of .9 acres, so.
That's why we're trying to make the card.
I hope, I hope that's true, but.
What is the rebound?
They spent two years on each property, that's all they spent.
Happen over the next two years.
And it has us a hundred sixty-three thousand, aren't they? This one here, I think, will cost us probably two hundred and fifty. A rebound, and we, we're probably gonna have to have it anyway.
It requires where the state can do it every ten years, so.
If we could get a proposition, thirteen, like, uh, California did.
Oh, God, no.
And then, uh, we could take a few people moving into the pants, so, so much for probably.
So, is the rebound gonna be in twenty twenty-two, I understand, or twenty twenty-three?
Probably twenty-two.
Oh, okay. That's gonna work on it, it's gonna take two municipal years.
Did Christine say she hoped that everything started this year? He's putting out bids on all this.
Yeah.
Bids is gonna.
We didn't get any bids, we didn't get any returns on our RFP. But she is currently working with a local, uh, company and hopes to have an offer submitted for the selectment review.
So Vision did not respond, Vision did not respond.
Being a towns person, I would prefer not to have anybody within a hundred miles of this town do the job. It's far better when you have somebody out there that just looks at numbers.
I agree, I can appreciate that, but if you talk to anyone other town going through the rebound, I would basically take what you can get, because nobody is doing that.
Well, busy.
Everyone's busy.
Everybody is so busy.
But yeah, I respect that.
Well, last time you had the rebound, the only two companies that applied were both the Massachusetts. We never got anybody else.
Other public comments?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I do.
I do have, I do have one question about tree growth. The state has standards, who are the eyes on the property that actually develop? Whether it's mixed or hardwood, what percentages are?
No, you have, you have an application saying what it is.
Yeah.
So, I guess my question is, is tree growth in West Bath is generated off applications which are generated by forest people, not the homeowners.
Yeah, the foresters did it.
Forests.
Forests were the one that did it.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure that that's clear, because it sounds subjective. Somebody turns in a application, well, this is what I got. Unless you verify it's done by a forester.
It has to be done by a forester.
Yeah, it has to be done by a forester.
I know that.
Make sure it's done.
You just make sure the public understands and doesn't think that we're not making an arbitrary decision.
It is, it's a special thing to go in, we've got a guy right now that's got a lot of acres in West Bath. And the best I can offer him for a penalty, it could be over a hundred thousand dollars penalty.
I don't understand what you mean by the best you can offer him.
That's the best, I'm gonna try to cut it down to best I can. With that land, and probably reduce it to forty like yours.
Shouldn't it be an objective thing, not a subjective thing?
It, that would be up to me.
Shouldn't it be an objective thing, not a subjective thing?
No, uh, it would, it would require going through the land and looking at the land. Before, you know, before I would do that, anyway.
I, I guess that's my whole point about land values, it should be done by a professional, a gentleman every day, not by.
Well, it's done by, that's, that's where companies work. They have certified assessors that do the work.
Executive session?
Yes. Let's see. Um, I move that we, um, adjourn to executive session pursuant to, uh, one, MRS chapter thirteen.
O'Barry, yeah. Have you worn them out?
I'm, I'm, I'm moving to executive session.
Here, come on, Ron, do you wanna take that outside?
Yeah.
Thirteen.
Certainly, we will.
Section four oh five, six F to review an application for a property tax abatement submitted due to poverty or hardship.
Second?
Holly, I will do what you've asked me to do. I will do what you've asked me to do. And I'll drop that package to Harvey in the morning.